Okay, let's all stand, turn to your hymn books, to hymn number 236, 236.
Amazing grace, how sweet the sound, that saved a wretch like me! I once was lost, but now I'm found; what's white I see? Whose grace had taught my heart to fear; and braced my fears with thee! How precious did that grace appear, ye are I first believed! Through many dangers, trials and scares, I have already come! Thy grace hath taught me to speak the Lord's heart; and grace will we behold! When we've been there ten thousand years, bright shining as the sun! We know the steps to sing God's praise, and when we first begun.
Amen. Amen, we're singing tonight for our preacher. Our last trip tonight, okay? Good to have you here tonight, and several preachers in here, but Jason, why don't you open it?
Dear me, Father, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be among your people, Lord. Say, born again, Lord, that there's no other prayer of people here, Lord, than your people. So we pray that you just bless the singing tonight, bless the preaching, and, Lord, we pray that you just bless the man of God, because he gives a message, use him, Lord, in a great mighty way, and open our hearts to receive what you might have for us, and I will give you the honor and the glory for it, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Hymn number 256, 256.
When peace like a river attended my way, when sorrows like sea filled our soul, wherever I was, help has warned me to say: It is well, it is well with my soul! It is well with my soul, it is well, it is well with my soul! For saved in the blood of the dry ocean carnage, when this much assurance control, and rights have regarded, I have blessed the stain that has stained his blood for my soul! It is well with my soul, it is well, it is well with my soul! My sin, oh, the bliss of this glory has come; my sin, oh, it's far, but thou knowest; it's well to the cross, and I bear it no more; praise the Lord, praise the Lord, oh, my soul! It is well with my soul, it is well, it is well with my soul! And more is the day where my page shall be signed, the clouds be overcome as the storm; the Lord shall be sent, even so, it is well with my soul! It is well with my soul, it is well, it is well with my soul!
Hymn number 465, 465.
I was bursting in the car and bent and shit, and nothing satisfied there I found; until I was across the country, I came, the springs of living water get about; drinking at the springs of living water, happy now am I, my soul is satisfied; drinking at the springs of living water, oh, wonderful and countable supply; I'll swing the living water from the hills of dark, it makes me glad and happy all the way; now glory, praise and blessing, work the path I've trod, I'm shouting hallelujah every day! Drinking at the springs of living water, happy now am I, my soul is satisfied; drinking at the springs of living water, oh, wonderful and countable supply; oh, silver, most a continent to Calvary, a country that is full of deep and wide; a silver mountain, white sea to the water, three, where searching spirits can be satisfied; drinking at the springs of living water, happy now am I, my soul is satisfied; drinking at the springs of living water, oh, wonderful and countable supply.
Have you seen it? Okay, we're gonna have Brother David, David come up and do it, or it starts right now, and then when just before the message, that's what we're gonna have them here tonight, and they're gonna come up.
Amen. We're so thankful to be here, and we're usually with the group of students, you know, so it's a little bit, they just headed back home from the passage northwest, and so they made it back safely, and now we're getting ready for summer camp, so we're excited for that, but we're glad to be with you all tonight, and hope that this is a good one.
Amen.
On the hill called Calvary, Jesus, my Lord, suffered for me, buried the cross; all the way I sinned to the Lord; then they haled him to the cross; faith was a thing and the loss is suffered at all, because he loved me. Because he loved me, my Savior died; on the cross was crucified, oh, greater love, a mortal man has never been known; oh, praises dear name, he loves me so; how I am this, he's mine, I know; he's suffered it all, because he loved me.
Amen. Hallelujah. Come on, you make it such a good preparation for the service, and if you were here last night, was this your last night?
That's yours, sir.
Okay, you want a fresh one?
Yes, no, that'd be fine.
I shared that with all my train kids. The music adds so much, it's just good to see each one of you singing out, it's so nice to have David and his wife here, and she thinks I forgot Taylor's name, I said it was more, right? So nice to have them here, it's good, there's something about it, isn't there? There's something about it, and I was just thinking, as we're doing so, last night you covered very well the what happens when you get overwhelmed, isn't it funny that when they were preaching, in the Book of Acts, they said that Jesus went about doing good, and as a result of that, hey, they abused him so much, it was beyond anything we would desire, that's really amazing, isn't it? And then we get pretty full of hurt when we're trying to do good. And it doesn't justify it, but it certainly says we have someone who suffers, as we have, and we have something to sing about. Before I forget, we have a box, we don't send an offering played around, we have a box back there, we wanna contribute to expenses, and a love offering, please do so, but we're not gonna send an offering played around, and I think you'll be blessed tonight, I know you will be, and Joel and I have been such good friends for so many years, and I said this before, it's because of Brother James, and you say this is announcements, well, right now, I'm old enough, I can say whatever comes into my head. I remember years ago, and I shared this with you folks here a while back, I remember years ago, I went into the house, and Brother Joel, if he weren't Joel, I'd hate him, okay? Okay, he was showing these two young men, how, see, it's nothing like, there's nothing to it, you just, you didn't, where it goes down, you go up, and it was something like that, and I thought, symbol was fun to stand next to him, because he, he doesn't, he just sings, that's the kind I resent, because I can't do that. But, you know, it was really a blessing, this is the reason I shared, last time I was in Florida, one of those young men was a songwriter, do you remember that?
Yes, sir.
He's a songwriter down there, done a tremendous job, and there was Joel telling him, showing him how to sing, how to harmonize, and just think about, when we get to heaven, we'll get to be harmonizing, everyone will be able to sing perfectly, and that's just for that reason, don't you? And getting excited, hey, then, we're still surrounded by a horrible wicked world around this, and yet, inside these walls, and frankly, with the message we take outside, we have something to be excited about, and I think it's a good time. We had pop up this afternoon, so everybody go early tonight, we'll have, we'll start all over again tomorrow night, we'll have pizza after the service at six o'clock, after the six o'clock service in the house, and I hope you can make it, we, we just look forward to a good time together, and we get together because we wanna hear from God, and this is just announcements, not too much to announce, it'll be normal services tomorrow, ten o'clock to eleven o'clock and six o'clock, and if you can make it out, and I'm trying to steal people from other churches, but if you can make it out, please come, and look, and look forward to expecting a blessing, so I think that's it, unless I'm forgetting something, my manager will have to pass me a note, but it's good to have you here tonight. Okay, well, let's all stand again, hymn number 493, 493.
Since the Savior found me, pardon my sin, I have had to try and live it all within; God is all the shame and sorrow of the past, there underneath the precious blood of Christ that lasts; save, 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 I'm happy on the way; save, 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 I love him more each day; save, 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 I know his mighty shout; he saves and gives the strength that finds me by his power; since the Savior found me, all to him I owe; for his precious blood has washed me white as snow; now the condemnation, the happy as in me; I'm glad that Jesus justifies and sets me free; save, 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 I'm happy on the way; save, 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 I love him more each day; save, 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 I know his mighty shout; he saves and gives the strength that finds me by his power; since the Savior found me, I have perfect rest; living in the realms of joy and happiness, leaning on my Savior, looking for that day; when each succumbent justice waiting right away; save, 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 I'm happy on the way; save, 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 I love him more each day; save, 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 I know his mighty shout; he saves and gives the strength that finds me by his power.
Hymn number 500, number 500.
Hallelujah.
When the trumpet of the Lord shall sound, the time shall be no more; and the morning breaks eternal rite and fair; when the Savior burst shall gather over on the other shore; and the rollers call up yonder, I'll be there; when the rollers call up yonder, when the rollers call up yonder, when the rollers call up yonder, I'll be there; on that rite of holiness morning, when the day of Christ shall rise, and the glory of his resurrection shares; when his chosen ones shall gather to their home beyond the sky; when the rollers call up yonder, I'll be there; when the rollers call up yonder, when the rollers call up yonder, when the rollers call up yonder, I'll be there; when a slaver for the master from the dawn shall set his sun; when a swat come all his wonders, love and care; and when all the life is over and our work on earth is done; and the rollers call up yonder, I'll be there; when the rollers call up yonder, when the rollers call up yonder, when the rollers call up yonder, I'll be there.
You may be seated. Okay, now, I don't know if I made this right, Brother David and Taylor come up for another special after dinner, Brother Joel will come and preach to you on the floor until it was break time last night, and you guys sound bound up, the music's great tonight, come on.
When I survey the wondrous waters, on which the prince, thy glory die; the richest gain, thy health, the loss, and for contempt, on all my pride.
O, bated love, that I struggle, saving the dead, upright my guide; all the living things, and strong me was, I sacrificed, and to his love. See from his hand, his hands receive sorrow and love; oh, mingled wine, bitter sour wine, and sorrow me, poor bones come of thorns, so rich a crown, well, well, of nature mine, that were and all, bring forth your small, thus amen, and so be mine, even so, I like mine all; thus amen, and so be mine, even so, I like mine all.
Amen.
Amen.
Good music tonight, would you say, Amen? I know it's Saturday, Saturday night, how many of you are to play some Saturday night that maybe twenty, thirty years ago, you would not have been, during that lifetime? I guarantee you, thirty plus years ago, I would not have been at church on Saturday night, for sure, and I'm glad that you're here tonight, and I hope that, I hope it's worth the trip out this evening, I appreciate all the kindness, and I got to eat my first huckleberry, piece of huckleberry pie, and then had huckleberry ice cream on the side. And I watched my friend drink huckleberry coffee, I just couldn't take that shit. It'd harm me right there. I do appreciate Brother, Brother Virgil, friend for a long, long time, and, you know, I think tonight, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to preach about that very thing, Abraham was the friend of God. If you look in James chapter two, and then if you would get Genesis also, chapter twenty-two, you could get both of those places this evening, and we'll see maybe what God will give us tonight, so James chapter two, Genesis twenty-two, two places in the Bible, and we're gonna start in the book of James. I think that everything has turned on sufficiently, if it's not, then we'll just, 'cause I got the thumbs up back there, last night, you couldn't see it, but I got a message, turn your mic on. You couldn't see it, but I did, it came from that little board right there. James chapter two, a chapter that I guess is debated by some, because they don't understand being justified by works before men, and justified by faith before God, but in case there's anybody here tonight that wouldn't know the difference, you are justified by faith before God, your works could never justify you before God, if your works could justify you before God, whether it's the keeping of the law or anything else, and when you get to heaven, you're gonna have something to brag about, but I'm telling all of us tonight, the only thing we're gonna be able to brag about when we get to heaven, is what the Lord Jesus tries to get for, now justified by works before men, that's a different thing. But here, in the middle of that conversation that's being had in James two, Abraham is pulled into this passage, verse twenty-one, when Abraham our Father justified by works, when he had offered Isaac his son upon the altar, before men, obviously, see us now how faith wrought with his works, and by works was faith made perfect, and the Scripture was fulfilled, which said, Abraham believed God, and it was imputed unto him for righteousness, and he was called the friend of God. Now we know that Abraham was the father of a great nation, according to Genesis chapter twelve, God said that he would make of Abraham a great nation, and then we know that later on, Romans chapter four, that he was the father of all them that believed, so Abraham had quite a status, as far as in God's eyes, this man is gonna be the father of great nation, he's also gonna be the father of them that believe, why? Because he believed God, and it was imputed unto him for righteousness, put to his account. And then, we know this, in verse number twenty-three, that God called Abraham his friend, and, you know, he did that three times in the Scripture, if you were writing down in Second Chronicles, twenty-eight, verse seven, Isaiah forty-one, in verse number eight, God noted that Abraham was his friend, his friend. Now, you know, I'm glad that I'm a child of God, if you're here tonight, and you have been born again, you and I can say right now, beloved, the Bible says, beloved, now are we the sons of God. I'm a child of God right now, that, yet, that's not gonna be what we I'm a child of God right now. That's not gonna be what we shall be. We're gonna be changed, but right now, I'm a child of God. But I don't know that I could just say that I'm necessarily a friend of God. Now, I would like to say this, Jesus Christ was called a friend of publicans and sinners. And the song comes in my mind, never a friend like Jesus. There is no friend like Jesus Christ. And all I would like to say is this, that Abraham rose to a status of being God's friend. That's not what he called himself. That's not what he put a T-shirt on and said, hey, I'm a friend of God. That's something that God said about Abraham. God said about Abraham, Abraham is my friend. And when you think about that, the disciples also in John, chapter fifteen, Jesus called them his friends. And I think it's possible to be a friend of Jesus Christ. And I think you can be a child of God by birth, by faith, alright? But to be the friend of God is going to take something on your part, on my part. How many of you know that there are such things as bad friends in the Bible? Absolutely. Judas was called a friend by Jesus Christ. That's amazing. He said, wherefore thou art come, they called him friend. And that's not just in the book of Matthew, but that also occurs in Psalm forty-one and Psalm fifty-five. I think that was genuine. I think Jesus was trying to reach out to Judas and give him an opportunity not to go through with what he already had in his heart. And he called him friend. You know, Job, Job had some friends, three friends. And those friends were friends in presence, but not in practice. And what I mean by that is this, you can be a friend in presence. They came to where Job was, they sat with him silently for seven days to mourn with him, but they weren't friends in practice. Because the Bible says a friend loved that what?
All the time.
We can get that a little stronger. Friend loved when?
All the time.
At Job's lowest point. If they were truly friends in practice, they would have loved him. But they didn't understand his position, so they condemned him. And they weren't very good friends. Adonai had a friend. Adonai's friend told him how to get what he wanted. And you know, you know, we have a lot of young people here tonight. I'm glad you're here. If you feel like you're a young person, can you just smile at me right quick? I'm just seeing how many smiles I get. Some of you, that's a half smile. You know, and some of you that are that old, what are you smiling for? As young as you feel, lower your eyes. But Adonai's friend told him how to get what he wanted. You know, the Bible defines friend in a completely different way. The Bible says that a friend, as iron sharpeneth iron, so a friend that's sharper than metal, that's his friend. In other words, he makes you better. He doesn't just tell you how to get what you want. And so friends in the Bible, the Bible says if a man is a friend of the world, he's an entity with God. In other words, you can't be a friend of the world and be a friend of God at the same time. And what I'm saying tonight in trying to just lead us to where I wanna go with, Abraham is a friend of God by God's declaration three times. And he's a good friend. How many of you appreciate you good friends that you have?
Amen.
Amen. I do too. I'm so glad that I got to be back in Montana. Got to be with my friend, got to be with brother David. Get to sit down next to him. And we've been friends now, not quite as close as brother Don and I, but been friends for a long time. And being able to see brother, brother we were tonight. Oh, you look like, boy, when I saw you, I thought about your brother me. Been friends for a long time. Do you ever, do you have a big cowboy hat like him? Oh, did you just wear it? Oh, did you? Good, you know, the Bible talks about how to be a friend, but you know, the world, the world has an idea that friendship is something completely different. Um, you know, Facebook is about friends. And you know, there are levels of friendship. You know, an intimate friend, an intimate friend, maybe five of those in your lifetime, so by then, no shoe passed. There are friends that could be what you would call sympathetic friends. They would be friends you would confide in, maybe fifteen of them. Then you have what would be maybe good friends, friends that would come to a big event, a graduation, some big birthday party, some event of success. Facebook says three hundred and thirty-eight friends is the average. And out of that, only a quarter of them are really true friends. Only a quarter. And you know, friends are something that can't be bought. You can't buy friendship. You can't do that. I learned that as a boy. I, I had a friend in church that I really wanted to be my friend. And one of the ways that we identified ourselves as friends in church was who you sat by. So if they sat by you, they were your friend. And I wanted to sit next to me, so I would bring the church candy. And I would give him candy, and boom, he's right there next to me. Until the candy ran out. And then when the candy ran out, he went and sat with somebody else. And I went to ask him, I said, why, what happened to that? He said, well, you didn't have any more candy. And that taught me something. You can't buy a friend. You know, the Bible's very clear. No one should write this reference down, Proverbs eighteen, twenty-four. And this is where we're going. The Bible says for a man to have friends, he must show himself to be friendly. And what I wanna say tonight is this, I don't think that Abraham was just called a friend of God because God arbitrarily decided, I'm gonna choose one man in the Bible, and I'm gonna make him my friend. I think Abraham showed himself to be a friend of God. And I'm gonna admit tonight, I've already confessed to the Lord, he has been a much better friend than me than I have ever been to him. I am blessed to have a friend like Jesus Christ. Now, I'm blessed to have good friends. I've got a lot of good friends all over the country. I appreciate them. I'm thankful that they're there. I'm thankful that they're there in hard times. But I'm telling you right now, there has never been a friend like Jesus Christ in you. And all I would just say is, I would like to be a better friend to Jesus tonight. I'd like to be a better friend. So, and we've been doing Genesis twenty-two. And that's concerning. I'm just one more word prayer. Lord, help me tonight to say what needs to be said, in the manner it needs to be said. Help me, Lord, to stay out of your ways. Help us tonight to see the truth better than that. And Lord, tonight, would you, would you write on our heart tonight? Would you help us to hear your voice? Would you help us when we leave this place, to be a little bit different than when we came in, better? For having sat around your table with Jesus today? Amen. So Genesis twenty-two, if you know the story. God has asked Abraham to do something that is really difficult. Verse number one, it came to pass after these things, that God did tempt Abraham into setting him up. He said, behold, here I am. And he said, take now thy son, thy only son, Isaac, whom thou lovest, and get thee into the land and worship him. And offer him there for a burnt offering upon one of the mountains, which I will tell thee of. And Abraham rose up early in the morning, saddled his ass, and took two of his young men with him, and Isaac his son, and claimed the wood for the burnt offering, and rose up and went into the place of which God had told him. Then on the third day, Abraham lifted up his eyes and saw the place afar off. And Abraham said to those young men, abide ye here with the ass, and I and the lad will go yonder and worship him, and come again to you. And Abraham took the wood of the burnt offering, and laid it upon Isaac his son. And he took the fire in his hand and a knife, and they went, both of them together. And Isaac spake unto Abraham his father, and said, my father. And he said, here am I, son. And he said, behold, the fire and the wood, where is the lamb for a burnt offering? Abraham said, my son, God will provide himself a lamb for a burnt offering. So they went, both of them together, and they came to the place which God had told him of. And Abraham built an altar there, and laid the wood in order, and bound Isaac his son, and laid him on the altar upon the wood. And Abraham stretched forth his hand, and took the knife to slay his son. And the angel of the Lord calling him out of heaven, and said, Abraham, Abraham. And he said, here am I. And he said, lay not thine hand upon the lad, neither do thou anything unto him. For now I know that thou fearest God, seeing thou hast not withheld thy son, thy only son from him. Well, like verse thirteen, I wouldn't go preach it, but I'm reading it. Abraham lifted up his eyes, and looked behind him, a ram caught in a thicket by his horns. And Abraham went and took the ram, and offered him up for a burnt offering, in the stead of his son. Now, I'm gonna say tonight that Abraham is a friend of God. And he shows himself to be friendly. He makes an attempt, he makes actions toward God, that God responds and says, not once, but three times, Abraham is my friend. And the first thing that I wanna note is this, Abraham trusted God. He showed that he trusted God. Look if you would again there. In verse number two, God asked him to take and sacrifice his only son. And the Bible says at the end of verse number two, upon one of the mountains, that I will tell thee of. And Abraham rose up early in the morning and saddled his ass. The Bible says that Abraham responded immediately. There is no debate. It looks as if God came to Abraham in the night and said, Abraham, here's what I want you to do, something that I've never asked anybody to do. Listen, the other gods of this world, they sacrificed, they had human sacrifice. That is not something that the Jewish people would do, but that is something that Jesus did for us. And he is asking him to do something that's not been asked before. He says, I want you to take your son, and I want you to sacrifice him on a mountain that I'm gonna tell you of. And the very next verse, look at it again in verse three. And Abraham rose up early in the morning. He didn't put it off to the afternoon, he didn't wait till the evening. He got up early, he did it immediately because he trusted God, and he showed that he trusted God. But that's not the first time he trusted. Go back just a few pages, look at Genesis, chapter twelve. Genesis, chapter twelve, I'm showing you why Abraham is called a friend of God, because he trusted God. He had confidence in God's character, and he had confidence in God's ability, his competence. I'm telling you tonight, we can trust the God of heaven because he has great character, and he has great competence. The world around us is filled with people with poor character. That is not true of our God. Our churches are filled with people with poor character. That is not true of God. There are people that have no idea of what they're doing. Can I get an amen on that? We had survived four years of somebody running out of country that had no idea what he was doing.
Come on, man.
Had thought somebody else was pulling all the levers because he couldn't do it. He couldn't do it. That is not, God is not incompetent. God is all-knowing. He is all, he is the only wise God. You can trust him even when he asks you to do something that's really difficult. Genesis twelve, verse number one, the Lord said unto Abraham, Abraham, get thee out of thy country, and from thy kindred, and from thy father's house, and the land that I will show thee, and I will make you to be a great nation. I will bless thee, and you know the rest of it. Look at verse four. So Abraham departed his lord. Here we know in Hebrews, chapter eleven, that he went out not knowing whether he went. God told him to go pack everything up. And I want you to leave your country and your kin, and that would be like you folks leaving Montana and going and living somewhere on the coast of Italy somewhere. I want you to leave everybody you know, the people that speak your language, the people that have huckleberries, and I want you to go to the coast of Italy. And I want you to live there. And I'll tell you where you're going when you get there. And Abraham didn't debate that, he just said, alright, if that's what you want, that's what I'll do. In fact, ladies, I believe this on my heart, that would be a difficult thing for your wife to do. Hey babe, we're leaving. Okay, great, where we going? I'm working on that. Okay, you're working on, so how much time until we leave? Tomorrow. Wait a minute, we're leaving tomorrow, and you don't know where we're going? No.
Don't fly.
And God told you that that's what I was supposed to do. You know, I know this without any doubt, that's not the first time Sarah heard that. There is no way he pulled that out first time and she said, no problem, pack it up, let's go. She had already learned to trust Abraham. You know what? It would be good for us as men to be trustworthy.
Come on.
To be trustworthy. If we want our wives to follow us, if we want our families to follow us, it would be good for us to show ourselves competent and a good character as well. But God tells Abraham, I want you to go where, you don't know where you're going, and Abraham trusts him implicitly. He does exactly what God tells him to do. John fifteen, the Bible says, here are my friends, if you do whatsoever I command you. But a lot of times I think people say, well, that means this, if you follow the ten commandments, if you do these things, if you don't curse. I don't believe that's in it all. He's talking to his disciples, you'll be my friends if you do what I tell you to do, just like he's telling Abraham, get thee out of thy country and go to places that I'm gonna show you. It's a whole lot easier not to curse than it is to pack up and go somewhere you don't know where you're going. Whole lot harder to do that. More difficult to say, okay, God, have no idea what you're doing and what your directions are, but if you told me to do it, I'm gonna do it. Really difficult. Follow me, and I'll make you to be fishers of men. Where we going? Follow me, and I'll make you to be fishers of men. What am I gonna do with all my stuff? Follow me, and I'll make you to be fishers of men. It's a whole lot more difficult to do that than it is to do all the things that we say, well, I'm not gonna commit adultery, which is right. And I'm not gonna take God's everything, which is right. I'm not saying any of those things are wrong. I'm just saying it's a whole lot harder to do what God is asking you to do than it is just to check off the things that we know are right and wrong. And Abraham did it because, listen to you, he trusted. Do you trust God?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. And then he used to say, I trust him. It's kinda like that guy, I don't remember his name, famous guy that went back and forth across Niagara Falls with Will Bearer. And when he got back to the other side, he said, how many of you believe I can do it again? Oh, yes, 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 we believe you can do it again. And he said, alright, I, I, who wants to get in the Will Bearer, let me take you over. And nobody would. No, we believe you can do it, but I'm not getting in the bucket right with you. Oh, we trust you, God, but I'm afraid to step out and do what you, that is my Abraham. Abraham, Abraham said, God, if that's what you want me to do, to take and sacrifice my son, how hard is that? You parents, think about that. How hard is it to sacrifice your child? And he said, listen, I trust you. If you ask me to do that, I know your character and your competence is right. And God said, yeah, that's my friend right there. That's my friend. God helped me to do more of that. Go back and do it in chapter forty-two. Chapter twenty-two, this is amazing to me. Verse three, Abraham rose up early in the morning, saddled his ass, took two of his young men with him. And the Bible says in verse four, then on the third day, Abraham lifted up his eyes and saw the place afar off. Now, what I'd like to say here is, I believe that Abraham talked much to God all the way there. How many of you think it would be reasonable for you to talk a whole lot to God all the way to sacrifice yourself? There's a lot of praying going on. I pray it all the way up here tonight. I, I love to do that when I'm coming to a meeting, I like to talk to God before I get to church. And you say, well, you should be here to talk to us, talk to God, and make it a little bit more important to talk to you. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying, I know he was talking to God because I knew I had to stand here, and I'm supposed to give you something from heaven, from the Bible, that is right, and that has been touched by the hand of God. And Abraham, Abraham is, I know he's talking to God, and it says on the third day, God didn't say anything to him. And you will show yourself a friend of God, when he's silent, you just keep, you just keep walking with him. And keep doing what he told you to do. Well, I've been, I have been there, I have been in the place as a pastor. God told me something, God directed my heart, God gave me a vision about something, and I'm not talking about a dream. I'm talking about he gave me a goal, he gave me a specific direction, and I'm waiting on him to come through with the rest of the details, and it's silent. And you know why God does that? It helps you learn, I can trust him even when he's silent. Never doubt in the dark what you saw in the light. What God teaches you in the light and God gives you in the day, don't doubt it when things get difficult. And Abraham here, God decided, and that's the second thing I would say this, if you're a friend of God, I believe you'll have conversations with God.
That's right.
I'm gonna say that again. If you're a friend of God, I believe you're gonna talk to him. Now, what I find in the Bible is in Genesis, chapters twelve and thirteen, God is talking to Abraham, and Abraham doesn't say anything. He just tells him where to go, he tells what you're gonna do. But then you get to, go to chapter fifteen, go to chapter fifteen. But then it changes. Go to chapter fifteen, Genesis fifteen. Genesis fifteen, the Bible says this, verse number one, at these scenes, the word of the Lord came unto Abraham, and the vision said, for thou art, I am thy shield, like shooting great reward, God makes a stable with a net for it. And Abraham said, Lord, God, what would I give you, seeing I know childless, and the steward of my house is this Eleusis of the masters? Or he knew it, God promised him in chapter twelve. And Abraham said, behold to me, thou hast given no seed, the low one born in my house is mine heir. And behold, the word of the Lord came unto him, saying, this shall not be thine heir, but he that shall come forth out of thine own mouth shall be thine heir. God is talking to Abraham about having a child. They're having a conversation back and forth. Hey, I might say tonight, listen, we, we do not have, we do not have a dead God. We do not speak of God in the past tense. In fact, when they came to Jesus, they tried to catch him in those questions, he said, listen, God is not the God of the dead, but of the living. I am the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. We don't serve a dead God, we serve a living God, which means that we can talk to him. You say, conversationally? Absolutely. You ought to have a conversation with God if you're his friend. There ought to be some dialogue going back and forth between you and the Lord. In fact, I would tell you this, being honest with God is probably what y'all do anyway. When you try to talk impressively to God, he already knows what's down in your heart anyway. If you're afraid, if you're, listen, if you're angry, if you're, if you have doubts, that's what Abraham is doing. Listen, I'm, I'm childless. And God says, no, this, 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 this child is not gonna be your heir, but one that comes out of your own mouth. And the whole chap- And the whole chapter fifteen, they are conversing with each other, you know, that continues in chapter seventeen? In chapter eighteen, it happens again. In chapter eighteen, God comes to Abraham, sitting in the door of his tent, and has a conversation, and what does Abraham start doing? God tells him, I'm gonna destroy Sodom and Gomorrah, and what does Abraham do? Well, I'm fifteen. And there is a conversation back and forth between God and Abraham. I'm just saying this, if we really think that our friends are people that we spend time talking to and not just showing up on Facebook, I'm telling you, if you wanna be God's friend, y'all gotta carry on some conversations with him. The Bible says this in Exodus thirty-three, the Lord spake unto Moses face to face as a man speaking unto his friend. If God's your friend, I think y'all talk to him. Amen. Y'all talk to him. Y'all spend some time speaking to God, we sing that song, take time to be holy, speak often with thy God. We, listen, your pastor, this man or whoever your pastor is, does not sit in some box somewhere. And you come and sit down next to him and relay messages through him to God, that is not what we believe. We believe that you have direct access to the throne of heaven, to the person of God in Jesus Christ. By being in his family, you can talk to God if you want to. Yeah, come on, you let him step you out of that, if your husband didn't talk to you for a week, how is that going? Had one brother admitted, oh boy. You were eating huckleberry pie?
You're eating nothing.
You eatin' butter and crackers, baby? If you can find it. That's just not the way it works. It doesn't work that way, if, if you and your child never speak, there is no relationship. If you and your spouse never speak, there may be a ring on your finger, you may be a child by birth, you may be a father by birth, but there is no relationship. And that's what, listen, I, I really believe it all in my heart, we are missing one of the greatest power supplies and advantages that we have. And that is direct access to heaven and conversation with God. Now, I'm gonna step out there, if you're gonna think I'm crazy, that's alright, this is Saturday night, tomorrow night, midnight, won't make any difference anyway. I, I, there are times I drive down the road and I move stuff out of my right, right front seat over to my, to my console or in the back, and I ask God, would you mind please sit down and talk to me for a while? I need it. And there have been times going down the road, I just get happy about that. And then there are times going down the road, it's lonely. You say, do you hear a voice? Well, no, not out loud. I hear a voice out loud, I'm expecting to go, uh. And I, I mean, one time Earl Hughes, I, 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 Earl Hughes comes to our, our church, he parks his little Geo Metro at six hundred fifty thousand miles an hour. And he would not let me put him in a hotel, he'd come in early that morning, I'd look out the window at my, at my house right next to church's apartment, and he would be walking around the car. And while he's walking around that little car, all of a sudden, he'd just start laughing, and then he's just talking. And in my mind, I'm thinking, he's a little bit... And you believe what you want, you got the God who viewed me, and said, Earl and I have a good time, mind your business. I'm gonna say that again. Abraham was a friend of God because they had conversations. They spoke to each other. And if you and I, we miss that part of the relationship with God, we miss out on being a friend. And it's a hard time to have conversation, but he has a conversation, go back to chapter twenty-two. I, I, I'm gonna end up being alone tonight if I don't get away. Genesis twenty-two, Genesis twenty-two, and I want you to know very clearly what's going on here in the passage that I watched. Verse number nine, they came to the place which God had told them of, and Abraham built an altar there, laid the wood in order, and bound Isaac his son, and laid him on the altar of wood. And when I read that, to think about doing that with my own wood would be really difficult. Really difficult. My son, redheaded, blue-eyed, that first child, didn't think that we even had children. Doctor trying to tell us, said, well, if you'll try this, when you're ready to have children, let us know, and I'm just gonna trust God. And finally, when, when my wife told me, she, she was with child, and we were just rejoicing, and then that little boy's born in this world, I mean, precious, holding that boy. To think about that boy as I watch him grow up, and there's no doubt, Isaac is not some little baby, he's a boy, he's a young man, and he is gonna be laid, he let his dad bind him. No struggle. He'd already asked, hey dad, where's lamb? He said, I'll go provide that. And you imagine, he started binding his old boy, and that's say, there's a conversation, maybe there was, and he lays him on the altar. That, that is such a, that is such a precious gift. Listen, God gave us his son, can I get an amen on that? Precious gift. You know, the Bible says that, that a man that gives gifts, every man gives. And one of the things I'd say, if you really wanna be a friend of God, one of the things you need to do is, just check yourself, what do you give to him? What kind of gifts do you give to God? This is not the first time that Abraham has done that, go back to chapter fourteen if you would, chapter fourteen. I'll move a little faster, give you that with me, chapter fourteen of the Bible says, chapter fourteen, Abraham's gone out and he has won the battle, he's gotten locked back after defeating these kings with his own servants. And when he comes back and the king of Sodom wants to be able to take the people, but says, Abraham, you just keep everything else. Look, the Bible says about what his, his conversation is, verse number nineteen, and he, verse eighteen, and Melchizedek, king of Salem, brought forth red wine, and he was the priest of the most high God, and he blessed him and said, bless be Abraham, the most high, uh, God, the, the most high God, possessor of heaven and earth. And he blessed, and blessed be the most high God who has delivered thy enemies into thy hand, and he gave him tithes of all. Abraham is giving him possessive property, he's giving him material wealth, he's giving him something valuable. I, I'm not here tonight to debate tithing, I'm not here tonight to debate missions giving, but I am telling you this, if you really are a friend to somebody, you won't have a problem giving them something. Luke chapter seven, that Bible that was a, that woman that was a great sinner, took that alabaster box of 15, broke it over Jesus' feet, she poured out her tears, she used her hair, she humbled herself before everybody, you know why? She didn't care what they thought, she loved him, so giving to him was no problem at all. We all, I can give to God out of duty, if we're his friend, we'll give to God just because we love him and what he's done for us. Today, I did not pay for my huckleberry pie, my friend did. Everything that I tried to buy today, he wanted to pay for it, you know why? Because he's my friend, he wanted to give, he wanted to open up the place, Lord told him to do it, and all that is God. What I'm saying is, if you're really a friend of God, then you will give to God. I want you to think for a minute, what it meant for him to do that in verse number nine, go back if you would, in twenty-two, nine. He lays his son on that, on that altar, he is giving to God not just his son, but he is giving to God a miracle child. This is a gift from God, and, and it would be easy for him to reason, it's not reasonable for me to do this, God, but he doesn't do that, he gives it to God. Can, can I ask you a question, listen, how many of you think, how many of you think that he's also risking his legacy? Abraham's an old man here, and what is Isaac supposed to be? He's supposed to be that great nation. So he is laying not just a boy there, but he's laying a great nation on that altar. I'd say that's a big gift. You know what else I think he learned on that altar? There's no way the devil, no way the devil didn't jump up on his shoulder and say, when you take and you put the knife to that boy, and you go back home, Sarah's gonna tell you. No way your wife's gonna stay back, and you tell her what you did? I'm telling you, he's risking his relationship with his wife that I know he loved, he is giving something more than just, okay, God, if that's what you want me to do, because we know how the story is, he didn't know how the story is. He just said, okay, I'll give it, Lord. So let me ask you a question, what do you give to God? What do you give to God? What's he asked for? Did God have anything you asked? What's the biggest thing you've ever given to God? Was it your career? We have some preachers in here, some of them gave up their careers and said, hey, you know what? I'll walk away from that, I know men that walk away from six-figure plus income to go in the hospital. God, if you want that, you can have that, I'm just gonna go ahead and do what you ask. There are parents, there are parents that gave up their children that went to a mission field, didn't come back home. Not just, not just to our country, I, I saw a big monument that you guys have downtown, all the veterans, and it's got a list of people, and I don't know how many conflicts of names are down there. But every name on there was somebody's son or daughter. And every time they go by, that's a cost to them. There, there are people that have given so much to the Lord. And all I'm just saying is, if you're, you're his friend, then it's not that big of a deal, it's not that big of a deal to give to him because, come on, has he not given to each of us? Can I get an amen on that? I know it's six fifty-nine, has God not given more to you than you've given to him? And, and we're talking about down here, how many of you think there's more to come when we get to the other side? We get to the other side, you're gonna find out this is exactly how God does reward, how God does repay, what God, God does give back to his children that give to him. Nobody, I've heard it said all my life, you can't outgive God, God will not be any man's dinner, we're gonna get, hey, you're gonna find out what you gave was really something he appreciated, but he's gonna get a whole lot more back. That boy that had five loaves and two fishes, he ended up having baskets, come on, help me out. Have you? Twelve baskets. I don't know what percentage that is in investment, but that's, that's pretty high. Five loaves and two small fishes, and he turns it into twelve baskets. But we're not given to get, we're given because we love the Lord and we wanna be his friend, and Abraham said, I'll give that. Fourthly, I'm, I'm moving the herd, fourthly. You know, I believe it's not written in chapter twenty-two, but I, I want you to go to chapter eighteen, and I'll only show you another reason I think Abraham is God's friend, but don't think it'd be right to leave this out. And that's because I think he ministered to the Lord. If you're God's friend, you'll minister to him, now, I've had friends minister to me, help me in low points in my life, help me when I had a need. Um, Genesis, chapter eighteen, the Bible says, when the Lord appears unto Moses, or rather Abraham there in the plains of Manory, look what the Bible says in verse number two. He lifted up his eyes, and looked, and Lotremine stood by him, and when he saw them, he ran to meet them from the tent door, and bowed himself to God, he went running to them. Any of you parents have one of your children run to you and beat you at the door? I'm talking about when they're little, when they're older, they don't do that. They run in front of you, not shoot you, unless they need money, they're not gonna come and say, I got three dollars, and then they're just gonna, they're gonna do that thing, they're gonna say, anyway, we'll, we'll loop on, but. They keep writing, and then look what else he said, verse four, level a little water, I pray you be fetched, and wash your feet, rest yourselves on the tree, and I will fetch you morsel brand, and come, he is, he is working to minister to the Lord. And, and I, if you're God's friend, I believe that you'll be, you will minister to him. Samuel ministered in the temple, or the tabernacle, but he also ministered unto the Lord. Do you know how you do that? You know how you can minister to the Lord? At the judgment of the nations, Jesus says, if you've done it unto one of these, the least of my brethren, ye have done it unto me. When, when Saul was persecuting Christians, the Lord told him, Saul saw, why persecute thou me? How many of you agree that this is the body of Christ, right here? This is the body of Christ right here. You, you know how you minister to the Lord, minister to these people? Love them, help them, be good to them, let them borrow your boat. Take them out for a meal. When they're, boy, the amen is just kinda lethal. You wanna be God's friend, when they have a need, show up. The pastor should not be the only person that visits people in the hospital. If they are part of your family, you should be involved in them. Now, I'm not saying that that gives him the liberty to say, well, I'm not gonna do that, because he is supposed to be the under shepherd of this particular congregation. But he is not the only person that ought to love other people, if somebody has a death, listen, if somebody has a death in the family, it ought to touch everybody in the church. And then if somebody has a success, we ought to all rejoice, if you're their friend. And if you're not their friend, you say, well, they always get the credit all the time anyway, they would have given you that. I've been in this a long time, so don't look at yourself, honestly, I know exactly why that worked. Didn't ask you to do that, didn't recognize me. I, I have been told so many times, you need to quit calling names and recognizing people, because you're leaving people out. And you know my reply to that is, well, Paul did the same thing in the book of Romans, and he didn't seem to feel too bad about that. And if you gotta have your name called to feel good about yourself, then you're doing it for the wrong reasons. If you gotta have somebody pat you on the back, make you feel good about what you did, you're, I'm not gonna say you're a Pharisee, but you're exactly in that same crowd. They did what they did to be seen of other people. But it's not wrong for a choice when somebody does a good job, that their business thrives, oh yeah, kind of heavenly nice car, we're not driving a very nice car. Right, good for choice, make them keep their air conditioning on in the church. Right. Abraham was ministering, but I don't think he's doing it just to do it, I think he's doing it because that's my God, and I'm gonna do something for him. And God said, that's my friend. That's my friend. Doc, I remember this, but my oldest daughter had spinal vivida, Lori, you remember that? Spinal vivida is a debilitating congenital birth defect. It's where the spine is attached inside, and sometimes it bulges up on the outside of the body. And so what they do is they, they cut it free, they try to put everything in the back in as best they can. Usually it shortens the lifespan, maybe fifteen, twenty years, they have it set the line, it swells with fever, they, they lose all competency, they have to be on ventilator to breathe, they're in a wheelchair because they can't walk. And, and I remember walking into a clinic with my, my, my little girl, and she was the healthiest girl there. But I had friends, and I had friends around the country, hey, so old, young pastor, didn't understand why God would let that happen. So we're just trying to serve you. Why won't you let this happen? Friends called and said, hey, anything I can do for you? I'm gonna send you some money, 'cause, and the bills were astronomical, check, check that doctor who owned a pediatric neurosurgeon at eight months of age. And I had no idea, as I'm going, tell you what God did, God, God took everything, verse was not on the outside, it was on the inside. But, but when that doctor finished it, fifty-five minutes, I remember, I got, I got the call, Mr. Lowen did the OR, and I thought, I've, I've seen this already on television. And, and I go back and I see my wife coming in, my dad behind her, and he stops her, and I walk in, there's those two doctors, and I'm thinking, this is not happening, this is not real. And when I walked up, it was supposed to be in the middle of an hour and a half, that doctor looked at me and he said, um, Mr. Lowen, I just wanna tell you, your, your daughter will never be done surgery again. And he's rocking, he's sitting, he got it, he took, he drew on, on his head, he said, I know what we saw on the, on the, on the image, and he said, but your daughter's spinal cord was here, the tumor's here, we cut the, we just cut the tumor free, we cut her spinal cord loose, and she'll, she'll never be good. But I had friends that ministered. They helped me. I really think that by helping me, they're helping the body of Christ. And I'm just saying tonight, if you're God's friend, you'll minister to him, and you can do it through these people. That's Abraham, last one, I'm finished, I, I, I go back to chapter twenty-two, I think we're in chapter eighteen, go to twenty-two. Chapter twenty-two, the other reason I think that Abraham is called God's friend because of what he gave to him, because of how he ministered to him, because of conversations he had with him, because he trusted him. But in verse of the Bible, the Bible says, Abraham said unto his young men, abide ye here with the ass, and I and the lad will go yonder and worship, and come again to you. How many of you believe that Abraham thought that no matter what happened on that mountaintop, that he and Isaac were coming back there? I believe that, I don't think he understood what he was saying. Because he knew God promised him back in chapter twelve, listen, you said you were gonna make him a great nation, you said this son, this son was gonna be a miraculous gift from you. And this boy was gonna be the one that carried on that nation, he didn't understand it, but he trusted God, he put faith in, then look at it again, look at that in verse number three. And Abraham said, my son, God will provide himself land, did God make it on his promise? And all I'm just saying is that Abraham put his faith in God. How many of you have understood that if you put your trust and confidence in him, you will be sorely disappointed, but if you put your faith in God, he will always make it on his promises. God, God is not any man's dinner when it comes to his word. And look, the Bible says, back in Romans, chapter four, when, when Abraham's body was dead, he was a hundred years old, and Sarah's womb was dead, that he did not, he did not step back, or he did not step away from the promises. But he embraces, because he believed that God was able to do exactly what he said he would do. I'd like to say tonight, if you're God's friend, you'll put more faith in what he promised you than what the world promises. If you're his friend. You're gonna believe him more than you believe Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok. You will put more confidence in God than you put in Washington DC. That includes the current administration. That includes the current administration. What I'm saying to you is this, your confidence in God is in the right place, and I'm just gonna take my church, believe God. Put your faith in God. And God said, that's my friend. He believes me, he trusts me, he's ministered to me, he's given me the most precious things that he has, and I want the world to know, that's my friend. And can I ask you a question? How many of you think we probably ought to be a better friend to God than we are? I already bet that all the way over here. I need to be a better friend. I need more faith, I need more trust, I need to give freely, I need to minister more. But can I ask you a question? How many of you think when they came down off that mountain, that Isaac ever forgot what God did? Here's how, here's how I like it. I'd like to think somewhere down the road, as Abraham's getting older, Isaac pulled up next to him, and he said, hey, Dad. And he laid him on the altar, had no idea what God was gonna do. Do you remember him showing us that ramen thing? Do you remember when we took that ramen, we slid that ramen instead of me? Man, we've had a big God, no one. Abraham being a friend of God affected his boy. Hey, Dad, Mom, your friendship with God reaches farther than just you. It can reach much farther than you. In fact, some of the people that have really touched my heart the most are the people that just look like having a relationship with God is better than what the world has to offer. I told you, Earl Hughes walking around the car and laughing with the Lord. He had a Geo Metro, do you know how big a Geo Metro is? It's half a Volkswagen. Six hundred and fifty, I would not be walking around laughing, I'd be kicking my teeth. And he and the Lord have, and I would ask him sometimes, and I'd say, how do you prepare your messages? And he'd say, well, George, I just, I just trust the Lord, and I'd sit there, he would study and meditate, and he'd get in the pulpit, he'd say, sometimes I don't have point number two, and God just graciously gives me point number two. And I know that is not from, that is not homiletically good. You should, you should be prepared, but he's prepared in his relationship with God and his heart. And he would get up, and God would give, and I would sit back and say, wow. Seems like there's a whole lot of good going on there that reaches way outside of just my relationship. So, can I ask you a question? Haven't you borne him? And you believe that Jesus was a friend of sinners? And he called Abraham his friend. And he told his disciples, you know, be my friends also, but I'm gonna put a condition on you. And so tonight, it'd be real simple, I'd use some piano, and we didn't stand up last, unless you stand up, if you're still, if you're children, that's alright, stay with me. You think about how good a friend God's been to you, and here's what I'd like to invite you to do. I'd like to just invite you, come to the altar and say, Lord, I want to be a better friend. You can't be more saved than you are. And you don't have to ask God for more, but I want to be a better friend, I want more faith in you, I want to put more trust in you, I wanna give you more, I wanna minister to you more. That's a pure place, make me just, that's all, you, 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 you're, you're an act of saving God. I want to be a friend, and I think he's watching. I think he's watching. I think he's been here tonight. I, I think, I think his heart is moved by men and women that say, I find more value in you than I do in the reputation and the things of this world, that God, what I want to do is, I want to be that kind of friend. Or maybe you could get on altar like I did this afternoon, just told, Lord, I'm sorry, Lord, I, I, I just not that friend I need to be. Because you know, when you're not a friend, you need to be, when, many times you lose your friends, they leave you, they walk off from you, they cancel the friendship, they close it out. God, not that way. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Never a friend like Jesus. What a privilege to have a friend like that. Abraham shows us it's not a one-way street, it's, it's two ways, it's a relationship. What a picture, what an example of somebody showing us that we can be more than just a child of God. Lord, again, tonight, let's take, thank these people that stayed on Saturday evening. Lord, we've sung a lot, we've gathered around your words, we're trying to hear your, your voice, and and I, I challenge my own self, Lord, when things are hard, things are dark, it's easy, I guess, to walk away from you, find somebody else, find something new. Lord, forgive us for those times when we fail in our friendship. Lord, thank you for being a friend of sinners, verse number one. Thank you for being a faithful friend to us. I pray you'd help us in these days that we live, when so many of us seem to walk away from the blessings and benefits of being in your family. Oh, God, help us not to be those people, or help us to be identified with you, not ashamed of you. Or still in love with you when you call us home. I, I pray you'd do that for this church, for Grace Baptist, and these other men that are here tonight, the ministries that they represent. Or that it's not all about form and duty, and having to be a certain thing in somebody's eye, but, Lord, that we just have a, we have the right relationship with the God of heaven. I pray you'd make it so that, like Jesus, I pray the pastor.
Well, every point you look to me, all the way through that, I've been thinking, you study the great revivals that have names, you know? I don't think there's an exception, everyone starts out with prayer meanings. That's just communicating with God. We get to the point, and we, we get to the point where we say, this day is a dark and cold day. It is, there's one that I'm telling you. Is this the first dark and cold day that the world's ever seen? I, I suspect, I'm afraid, that God's people don't talk to God. We can't blame anyone but ourselves. Maybe revival's not gonna come, I mean, maybe it is cold and dark world, but a friend is gonna be imploring God of heaven for the people around us. So I like knocking on doors, get people, you hear them screaming at each other inside the living room, and you get up and knock on the door, hi, we're fine. They're not fine. Our power comes from prayer, and I, I brother, God gives him this point in the middle of it. That's where you're led by the Spirit of God. We need more of that, don't we? Easiest thing is just appreciate one another. I said, we can add to that, I don't mean add to that. Sure, good to have him here, good to have you two here today. Sorry that tomorrow's the last day, but we're gonna have a good time tomorrow. And I hope you can come, but thanks for coming tonight, let's pray. Lord, thank you for your goodness to us, thank you for hearing from you, Father, and thank you for the, the example of Abraham that has profoundly affected us for centuries, Lord. Praise you bless us, and put a fire in each of our hearts and souls, Lord. May the world around us know what we believe, and know how, that we care about them, and that Jesus will try to take them if they'll just come to him. All just bless us tonight, and thank you for all you've done, Jesus, amen.